We're showing live, are we ready? We are live. Okay, welcome to February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting in Calver City Council. We've got two, two members who are joining us by Zoom. And we will begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Lynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, so first order of business, everybody's had a copy of the minutes of the meeting from January tenth. Any additions, deletions, modifications? If not, I'll take up motion.
The only thing.
Oh, hold it, we got some.
I do have one, was Jim Ewing not also on the? Right, because he wasn't on that. Oh, let me start, see what's his. City Administrator Board, City Attorney, North Cut, Councilman Hale and Mr. Tucker will meet to discuss further. I think Jim Ewing's name was in that as well. You want me to listen to it again? Did you know that Jim Ewing?
I mean, I think I was on there too. I intended it for, for me too. I mean, we, but as far as the meeting of the minutes, did, did you listen to it?
I did go back, listened to all of it, but I won't go back.
So that's what was said, and what was said was probably not as precise as it needed to be. But I think the intent is that Jim would be added and I would be added into that, into that group.
Okay.
So we, I guess we should clarify that. I don't know how we can clarify that if it wasn't said at the actual meeting. But.
Well, when we, okay, let's just, if it would be easier, if it would be easier when we have a little bit of discussion this afternoon, we will just clarify then, and that will save Glenda from doing. That was fine.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Nina.
But he was on the call. Okay, he is on the call.
And second or whoever's second is, we're good.
All right, Nina makes a motion, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Checking it home, we got some thumbs up, Kevin. Just make sure I got it. All right, thanks, Kevin. All right, I was having, so meeting in a period. So item number three on the list, are we ready for the youth voice writing contest winner for the month?
And so, I mean, they're not on the call, but her name is Adley Flydecker. She's in eighth grade. She's from Redland Middle School. We had fifty submissions this month. And she is a huddle leader for FCLA, which I think is future Christian leadership. She plays softball and the title of her submission was the impacts of modern technology and teens. I posted it today on our, on our blog. Go and read it. It's really, really good. Coming from an eighth grader's standpoint, pretty impressed with it, so it was cool. Anyway, congratulations to Adley Flydecker.
Adley Flydecker. Okay. Thank you, Blair. Proceeding on to some old business, we'll stick with the, with the order of the agenda. We've got some second readings of different items. So who, who's in charge of the structures, conditional use, moving that to, from conditional use to variance? Reading the ordinance twenty-two dash oh two.
Twenty-two oh two. Whereas the Calver City Planning Commission is considered and proposed an amendment to Article eleven zoning ordinance to address the procedure of considering the location of otherwise disallowed buildings in the city more appropriately, by variance rather than conditional use permits. And whereas the planning commission is held public hearing after notice to receive public comment of the government's enforcement in accordance with CARRIS one hundred point two eleven sub three. Whereas the planning commission has recommended to the city council that the ordinance be revised as foreseen, whereas the council has determined the recommendation of the planning commission to represent the best interest of the city and commercial development within the city. Now therefore being ordained by the city of Calver City, Kentucky, Article eight point five, Calver City zoning ordinance, ordinance number two seventeen oh six, hereby as amended as follows. And this is section eight point five, as amended, except in highway-oriented commercial districts and industrial districts, principal and accessory buildings and structures shall be subject to following regulations. A, only one building and two accessory buildings and structures can be erected on any one lot unless additional buildings or structures are expressly authorized by variance. B, not with standing foreground limitation, children's play structures and toys of lateral dimensions not exceeding three hundred square feet and both ground swimming pools not exceeding three feet in height may be placed in a backyard or on the side yard corner locks without further regulation for this ordinance and then applicable setbacks. C, the lateral area footprint of all accessory buildings and structures shall not exceed fifty percent of the lateral area footprint of the principal buildings unless authorized by variance. D, the highest point, the peak of any accessory building or structure shall not exceed the highest point, peak of the principal building except as authorized by variance. E, accessory buildings and structures shall not be erected in any front garden unless authorized by a variance. F, accessory buildings and structures occupying five hundred square feet or more must observe setback from others, otherwise applicable to the, in the affected zone of the district. Accessory buildings and structures are confined less than five hundred square feet, maybe erected not near than six feet to any joint rear lot line that was standing where you weren't set back otherwise. G, accessory building instructors not by not more than twenty-five percent of any non-required yard and age. In the case of double frontage lots, accessory buildings shall jump the front yard requirements on both front streets. That's the ordinance as amended.
Okay, so in layman's terms, for people listening to this, the change from conditional use permit to variance accomplishes what?
Basically, the, a, a conditional use permit is personal to whoever gets the conditional use permit. A variance runs with the land. Well, the way our ordinance was written, we had conditional use permits attached to some buildings. That creates an inherent incongruence because somebody's got a conditional use permit for a building, they build a building, and then when they move, the next owner of the building no longer has a conditional use permit with regard to that building. And so variance suits the, the situation for that purpose much better than a conditional use permit does.
Okay.
So that's what, that's why we made the change.
Basically, it's tied to the land, not to the building.
Yes.
So if you sell the land, then the person buying the land is afforded the variance, the same.
Anybody have any questions or comments before we take a vote on this? Since this is a second reading, this is. So please do the.
Greg, you said something about for that purpose, does that imply there's some other?
Yes, the, the procedure for getting a conditional use permit and the procedure for getting a variance are not identical. And it is a, a conditional use permit is a, notifies neighbors, variances do not necessarily notify neighbors, that kind of thing. The standards for when variances can be permitted and, and conditional use permits can be permitted are not exactly the same. But after the planning commission looked at it, examined it more closely, had a public hearing, discussed it, they decided, yeah, that's the better mechanism for addressing the issues that you need to address in putting up buildings.
Anything else? All right.
I need a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Wait a second.
Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Councilman Harrington.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Okay, so we have another second reading.
This is an ordinance admitting Article eleven schedule of uses in Calver City zoning ordinance. And if you guys look in your package, this is what the schedule of uses looks like in the zoning ordinance. And here's the ordinance, whereas the planning commission has observed an identity of redundancy in the existing schedule of uses in the city's zoning ordinance relating to automobile and truck repair garages. And whereas the planning commission is held public hearing, sent to notices required by CARRIS one hundred point two eleven sub two to receive public comment on an amendment to Article eleven schedule of uses in Calver City zoning ordinance and has recommended the amendment reflected herein. And whereas the city council has accepted and approved the recommendation of the planning commission as representing the best interest of the city and its constituents. Now this will be a thing by the city of Calver City, Kentucky, that Article eleven schedule of uses of Calver City zoning ordinance, hereby as amended, only as reflected on the attachment here to. No other portions of the zoning ordinance are affecting that as an end. And the amendment is the removal of automobile, ampersand, truck, prepared garages from the schedule of uses. That's the ordinance as presented. And just so that you guys know, there was another section that covered that same use in the schedule of uses. And so, redundancy, making the entire ordinance more consistent.
Any questions for Greg? Do I need a motion? Ralph? Wait a second.
Uh, Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Parent.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Okay. Old business, a discussion of a partnership with Calver City First Baptist Church and the Red Cross to establish a local emergency shelter. We've done some work and done some inquiries. We've looked at some issues, but we have not had a meeting with First Baptist Church as a group. Nita's been back and circled the bases and, and then done some work. So through the, the recent tornado, I had some contacts with the Red Cross. And the Red Cross's disaster program manager in Owensboro shared with me that First Baptist Church does have that designation in their system. And that she's got the proper contacts. There's also other people in Calver City that have that designation. Nonetheless, we looked at some of the things that needed to happen in terms of using taxpayers' funds to further the need for us, especially a parent now with what our local community's been through, is to have some shelters available to us and how the city of Calver City can best foster that end. And with that said, we know some things and, and we need to have a follow-up meeting. Well, not a follow-up, but the first meeting with First Baptist and, and kind of get back to this, but there is, there are some things to, to make us all aware of as far as whether we could buy a generator and lease it and some other options that we have to do for dispensation of taxpayers' money. And I'll turn it over to Nita right now. Do you want to share some things that you learned, Nita?
Okay, can y'all hear me okay? Um, I think there, to, to clarify, and I, I think that my first question with this was, my idea was, or question, could we buy a generator and lease it to First Baptist Church for the purpose of having a Red Cross shelter? The, we, the only, basically, what I thought we could do, we could lease it to them for a minimal fee. And then they could, and once it was designated, I think there are levels of shelters. Where, once that the Red Cross declared an emergency, then they would be able to use the generator and stuff. The problem comes in is when the power goes, sorry, say we gave them the, you know, leased them the generator. When the power goes out, the power usage by the church becomes a problem. It, it becomes that they're getting favoritism from the city because of that power usage. They cannot reimburse us for that. It would be similar to somebody, if the city had a stockpile of gravel and I called and said, come bring some gravel to my house and I'll reimburse you. Well, if Brad brought me the gravel and I said that five hundred dollars worth of gravel was worth five dollars, you know, it'd sort of be the good old boy system is what I'm saying. That's what, that is, I'm not saying I agree with it, but that's the way legally that it's looked at. There's one possibility, and this is what we need to discuss with First Baptist Church and any other entity as far as I'm concerned, if they're interested in doing something like this. Some stipulations that maybe we might jointly do this without the Red Cross. But I don't think, I didn't understand that being mentioned before, but that's one option that we may look at. The other option that, and Greg's tried to get in touch with the KLC attorney, I talked to two of the ladies last week. There is a possibility that we might could use some of the American Recovery Act funds to set up a city, a grant funded by the city from those funds and make that available. And, and of course, there would have to be certain stipulations that we would have to do and it would have to, Greg would have to work the legal aspects with Morgan and Megan. So those are the things that we have to look at. If it's okay with the council to go ahead, and I think our first step is to have that meeting and then we can see what alternatives we have and see whether or not we feel like we can proceed in the best interest of the city. Now, if you give me questions, I hope I haven't rambled, but it's.
I have a question.
Okay.
So just this, I'm just trying to get everything straight. So how, how is it favoritism towards First Baptist when if it is enacted, i- it becomes a Red Cross shelter for the community, not just First Baptist?
It's that small period of, I don't agree with it. It's a small period of time when there is not a disaster and the power were to go off and it would kick in and power First Baptist Church, then KLC or legally sees that as giving that entity an advantage over the other churches or the other people in town.
And there's not a way to.
It's, it's splitting hairs, to be honest with you, but.
Is there not a way to make it to where it doesn't, it manually has to be turned on?
Well, I, I ask, I ask her if they could, you know, they would know how much the bill was different or how much gas it took or whatever. I said, could they not reimburse the city? And she, she said, no. Okay. And, and the part of it is, is like, I mentioned the country club before, the country club is land. What, and, and she actually said that she was in favor of a type lease like that, but that was done a long time ago. And there was probably some economic development considerations in that, but land's not going anywhere. And even though the way I understood it, correct me if I'm wrong, on this, the generator or any piece of equipment would be mobile in a sense that they could move it.
So what if it were to be housed on city property and only the city moved it over and hooked it up in an emergency?
I, I think that might be something we could discuss, but I don't really think that's something we want because when it's,
How big this would be?
It's, it's, it's an operation to get one of those hooked up and hooked up right. It's not like you just go, you have to wire it into the buildings and stuff.
That's why it would automatically kick on.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of details and a lot of different ways to solve the problem. I think that we all agree that having the ability to have a place to shelter people in times of power failure, in times of inclement weather, you just fill in, fill in with your imagination of, of the different things that can happen, even the different things that several of us have experienced at different times. You know, we don't have a generator for our own civic center, for instance. And then with Red Cross, we, we had a conversation down here with, with some parties. The tornado event was disastrous and we've got a lot of national outpouring to our region. There were people that would have made a generator such as we're speaking of available for use. Even one as large to, to, to do First Baptist Church that were here on scene within the first week. So there were outside entities that would have been able to have done that. And there are outside entities that are able to, to feed people. But it takes a little while before you get that kind of recognition in those initial stages. And if, you know, you're trying to respond to emergencies and you're trying to move generators around, it gets pretty cumbersome. And, and I think, and I'll speak collectively, I think that having something similar installed to where it would, you know, I can think of back to a couple instances when the governor closes our interstates down. And so our officers were dragging people off the interstate into our community that were from all over the place off of Interstate twenty-four. Where do they get sheltered at? And so they ended up at, for instance, the civic center. So what do you do in those first few, that's one concern. And then for the longer concern, when you start talking about commercial kitchen supplies and having armies, so to speak, mobilize, how can we facilitate that? And that's kind of the, the second phase. And, and Red Cross is, was one that I think we all turn to to have certain expertise and certain ability to mobilize. Well, they have to have some facility to operate in. And so I think the original idea was to make sure that Calver City had such facilities that this third party could operate in. So we, if we, the council and, and the mayor administrative get together and put taxpayers' funds to, to apply to ensuring the safety and well-being of our citizens and our area, you know, what, what, which one of those gaps we looking to fill? And so I think we just need to do a little bit more discussion to make sure we're all kind of on the same page. And we can't show up there favoritism. I mean, the fact that in our area, a lot of the folks who have real estate and buildings that would be facilitating to that are often churches. And, and we have to, you know, the separation of church and state and a lot of people's hot button is trying to be too, too favorable to churches. And we just have to make sure we have our ducks in a row, if you will, wherever that came from. That we, we have, you know, the proper thing.
And I think First Baptist thought, I mean, their ideas, they'd been dealing with the Red Cross is that that would, you know, it would no longer be First Baptist, if there were a disaster declared, it would become the Red Cross.
So they were willing to turn the facility over to Red Cross and then they had this gap.
The gap, the gap was having a generator so that, you know, you know, if you had an ice storm or if you, if the tornado had, had been in colder weather, because it was in December, or if it had been hotter weather, you would need, granddaughter, you would need that option. You need lots. I mean, you know, you need lots. It's just, just that simple and I, to me, I think we can work through it. I just.
I do like the idea of the, the grant.
I, I just think there's things that we can explore and come back with you all and, and do that. And I, I, to me, the main thing is, is that, and I think any other church could have, but at the present time, they have offered us a service that we need to explore that. And we need, you know, and to show our willingness to protect our people and we have the extra situation with the plants. You know, and, and things can happen, and the river. I mean, we know that things can happen on the river. So it, it's a matter of taking care of our people. And I guess this is the right time to clarify that we have a committee and it made up of Greg, John, Jean, Brother Ewing, Jim Ewing, Ray Tucker, and me, and.
We can talk about the first idea of First Baptist Church and what that congregation is willing to do and then sort of thing. And, and, you know, we're going to consult legal opinions and make sure, I mean, listen, Calver City's been blessed with great community partners. And we continue to be. And I think we won't have, you know, to, to kind of answer Jeremy's original question, I, I don't think there's a problem with us figuring out how to take advantage, how to capitalize on the community involvement. We just have to make sure we do it in the right way. And so there is, there is a notion that with some of the American Recovery Act funds and, and Glenda is going to go through it along with me and take a look at the applicability of some of those things as far as, you know, might be some monies in there that, that may be allowed to do this. And we just have to get on the same page and take a look at how to proceed.
And that, and that is what, that's what the KLC attorney, Morgan, I don't know her last name, Greg, she is the one who brought up the American Recoveries Act to use that, so. But if we can change that to have the committee, and I don't want to prolong it and stuff, but just that, that we can keep moving forward with it and, you know, work with them and get on the same page.
Okay.
Chuck, I could just take thirty seconds and explain to you, Jeremy, and, and everybody else, that, that the key in these kinds of situations is that the city does, for instance, in this case, have the, the responsibilities, a governmental purpose to provide protection and care and shelter for its citizenry in times of disaster and, and emergency. However, the, over the past hundred fifty years, the law has developed pretty clearly that we, we can't turn that obligation over to a third party, to any third party. So for instance, I've done this now for thirty-two years, so I've learned the hard way. When we wanted to use, for instance, Humane Society to help us take care of some dogs, well, we couldn't just give Humane Society a thousand dollars and say, y'all take care of our dogs, won't you? We had to enter into a contract with the Humane Society whereby they would do A, B, C, and D in exchange for a contract amount. It's just like if you're paying somebody to build you a building, you can't just say, well, I want you to build me about a fifty thousand dollar building and I'll just give you fifty and you build me a nice building. It's got to be contractual. Well, that seems, from a community standpoint, that seems a little ridiculous. But from a governmental law standpoint, that's the, that's where we stand. So, you know, you've got to, you've got to make sure that when you, when you tax somebody and take their money, that you spend it in a responsible way to provide a service that you've got an obligation to provide as a government. And so when you're talking about this kind of situation, you know, for instance, we could pay First Baptist Church forty thousand dollars to give us periodic lease of their facilities so that we could use those facilities to provide care. But that's pretty complicated. When you start thinking about who's going to provide the service and who's going to ensure this and who's responsible for those costs and those liabilities, it gets really thick fast. And so that might not be the direction that we want to go in this situation. But, but you can't do things like I'll go out and buy an asset and lease it to a third party. That's not, that's not a business, the city's not, not a business. We can't, we, we can't do that just to make some money. We have to contractually have the right to demand that these, these services are provided and that it feels uncomfortable and it is uncomfortable, but that's sort of where we are. So that's why we're looking at, what are the other, are there some other options that might give us a more tolerable outcome?
And, and the thing is, is when, when we're having bad days, whether because of a human error or acts of God, somebody needs to do something for people quick. And that's, that's why you have to pre-plan. I mean, we, we, we've had it, like I said, we had a meeting that people could make it rain generators for you. Well, that was, that was a while. That, that was several days, maybe a couple of weeks after the fact, and they, they could actually deliver, even hook up the thing. And it would have to be returned at the end of the crisis. And then even had that offered, and it's like, well, the power's on here. We don't need a generator. We're lucky, but, but, you know.
But we have the opportunity to not going a few days without.
That's, that's why I think, that's for me, that's what the goal would be. And I think Nita too, is, uh, is to get something in place and, and, and so we can address things quickly. Well, you can't just shoot from the hip and concoct things. You got to have stuff.
Are we able to purchase it and not ask to, for it to be leased?
Sure. Yeah, we can own, yes, we can own generators.
But we, we just can't hook it up to the building?
We have to use it for, we have to, we have to assure that it is going, going to be used to accomplish some purpose that you determine is the, the right purpose. And it can't be because Greg's a nice guy.
I, I, I will, I'll try to answer, the city does own generators. We have generators. Okay? And in, in an emergency declaration, I believe that could be done, that we could hook it up to a particular place. Okay, so we, we have the part of that. I think what we're talking about is being prepared to do that in a much more planned, thought-out position. One of the things, you know, we may want to take a look at budget time, we may want to equip the civic center with a generator. That may be something that would be something we could look at moving forward to help us with the community's disaster preparedness. The problem is, the civic center doesn't really have, uh, it, it's got a very small kitchen that could facilitate the contractor, but we couldn't prepare meals for anywhere near. And it doesn't have rooms and it doesn't have, it doesn't, yeah, and it, it doesn't have the size and it has a lot of, but as far as a, as a warming shelter in the short term. And we've got, we've got a lot of different things we can do. I think that it, I think it's incumbent upon us to get that in a better master plan so we can act better and, and we can act better if we can include some of our community partners in, in that planning. So. So moving forward, I think before our next meeting, we can. so moving forward, I think before our next meeting, we can, we can sit down with First Baptist and get a better understanding of what's going on there and explain some of the difficulties and and be prepared to try to make a recommendation of of what we could maybe possibly do.
And if we did go in the direction of of a grant, uh, if if that was agreed upon, we we could also have that set up. If someone else, you you know, when you have a grant, other people can apply for it. We're not, I mean, right now, we're talking about First Baptist because they've made the offer. But once we had the grant, if there was, you know, there will be stipulations and things, and it might well be that if we had the money, maybe we could divide it up between the two people that are shelters. You know, there's just a lot of possibilities, you know, that we the, I I think we all agree, our bottom line is taking care of our people and planning ahead. And that's, I think that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. So there's a report out on that topic of old business. Anybody else have any questions about that particular topic? Okay. Moving on to, uh, other business, let's skip down here.
Can we?
We'll do the determination.
Well, no, I was thinking more with let Stephen Pekarsky talk. Because this really is old business.
Stephen, is he?
Are you there, Stephen?
We got Stephen?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I'm trying to do the unmute button, the unmute button.
Okay. You want to do an introduction here?
Yes, Stephen Pekarsky is with KLC. And you remember that we were wanting to get the money, borrow the money through a bond fund for the airport, for the tea hangers, for our portion of the tea hangers. So we could free up that money and we were wanting the airport to take care of itself. That was kind of the bottom line of how you all wanted to do this. Well, they have been trying to get, you know, have a bond that that they could tack on our five hundred thousand or five fifty that we wanted. And so I think something maybe has become available. And he sent me a bunch of information, but I told him, I said, uh, you're going to have to be here and talk about this. So he's gonna kind of fill us in because we do have a resolution to pass. We have, if we, you know, want to move forward, we have a resolution, we have an ordinance. And so Stephen, can you take it from there?
Yes, absolutely. So we have, as Glenda alluded to, we have a resolution. That resolution is for the city to join the interlocal cooperation agreement act. That allows KLC as the bond issuer to act on your all's behalf. Uh, this is a one-time thing. So if we ever come back to the table again and reissue any other type of municipal bond debt, uh, the resolution does not need to be acted upon at a future date. So that is the first, uh, measure of this activity. The second is the ordinance. The ordinance is associated with the overall financing of this reimbursement related to the hangar project. Um, as a general obligation fudge, we are obligated to do such activity via the ordinance path. So we will have to do the first and second reading. So we can't accomplish both of those tonight. That in summary is where we stand. So previously you all had approved a reimbursement resolution to tidy everything up to make sure that there's going to be, uh, no question about the availability of all these reimbursement expenses. So that kind of gives context back to that previous action. I feel, uh, data's lost on me. It's kind of been one of those times where everything else in the world is moving quickly. But as Glenda alluded to, we do have a deal that is, uh, moving quickly after the holiday haze has, uh, left everyone's psyche. So now we are looking to close, um, or close a bond sale mid-April or mid-March with the closing and funding date of this deal, uh, sometime probably within the first two weeks of April. So money back in the hand of the city as long as everything goes according to plan early April. That clears mud?
Okay, so, um, council, this is, this is to include the cost of building the airport hangers, that project in with this bond issue. And so we have in front of you an ordinance and a resolution.
Yes.
So we're looking at, uh, what's, what's the timeframe on these things? What's the schedule?
So we would, we would sell the bonds middle of March. So that's when we would know the exact finding the true cost of everything. Uh, we still are online or if not slightly under what we thought about originally for total cost. Uh, then come April, we would have the lease closing documents to you mayor for execution.
Okay, so as far as the timeframe for consideration of this resolution and this ordinance, what are we looking at having to do?
So do they need to be passed tonight? Are you needing these fairly quickly?
You have, so your next call meeting is the second Monday of of March, correct?
That is correct.
So we are the fourteenth. That both of that, that date and today are perfectly fine with our schedule. There is no need for any type of special call meeting. So we would do the resolution and the first reading today and then come back with the second reading of that ordinance, right, ordinance, the fourteenth of March.
If this is what y'all still want to do.
Who would buy the bonds?
They would be subject to the entire competitive market. Uh, you would think like Bank of America, US Bank, Bear, PNC, all those institutional investors are the ones that purchased the bonds for their portfolios, for their fixing on clients. That's not to prevent anybody to go out there and buy. We're looking at about a fourteen million dollar total issue. So this is going to be a very attractive offering, which we hope yields significantly lower rates, but um, that is not something that we can dictate. We can just, we ride the wave wherever the wave takes us. Uh, and obviously if we see something completely out of the norm, we are not beholden to going forward with the financing at that point in time. So if interest rates spike, we can peel back and start, uh, the process at a later point. So.
And so we did the same thing with the water meters. That's what we have. That's what we're, we're doing right now. We did that. Um, we got a real water loan. It's a bond fund and that's what they did. Not with KLC, but it it's the very, it's the same thing.
So we spent this money.
We've spent this money, right. Most of it was reimbursed by the state, but we were out about five hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the money we're talking about.
That's the money we're talking about. Getting that reimbursed. I don't know that, Stephen, we don't know that we'll get all of that, correct? Because the timing of some of those.
Yeah, so we have the reimbursement resolution allows, uh, a sixty day look back window, which covers a six, a substantial portion of the expenses. I think that was north of four hundred and fifty thousand. This, the reimbursement resolution also allows for up to twenty percent of the issue cost to pay for pre-construction work. That pre-construction work is information that we that we need to confirm or have the city attest to. Uh, but that could afford an additional hundred and twelve thousand. So in reality, we could be north of the original five fifty, but I think we are comfortable to say everything that we understand now, uh, we would be reimbursement of the, the city's original ask.
So we're basically asking for reimbursement of the amounts that we were at. And so from a budget standpoint, right now, we're sort of at zero. We got or we spent the money and now we're going to get the money back. But then, then over the next ever many years, fifteen or twenty years, that'll become a budget item. But but it will be matched by revenue from the lease of the hangers.
Correct.
Which we would hope to have anyway. So we are, by taking this money now, uh, and bringing that into the budget whenever it shows up. But then we commit ourselves to a budget item of, I've forgotten how much that was now, but thirty or forty thousand a year or something like that. Right, right. For so many years. So that, that was, that was, that's exactly right. I mean, we, we looked at the budget and we had developed some budget recommendations that included the city putting that entire bill. And we had some discussion in our workshops about that would mean that we'd have to postpone some things that we needed, wanted to do in the city. And, you know, the, the overall direction that the council, uh, had taken with the airport overall, I think has been very successful. But we said that the airport, you know, through the intervention of the city and the creation of the board and all the things that we did, it would be the self-financing sort of thing. So we even, you know, we, we looked at, we could have looked at some alternative financing with some local banks and and other things to to put that back into the city to allow us to do the things we needed to accomplish without setting back our, our agenda based on a commitment to an airport, which is perfectly capable of taking care of itself.
Right.
And, uh, so that's, that's, remember that conversation from the budget workshop. So this, this is the financing alternative that we have is this municipal bond issue. It requires these actions by the council, and that's given us our lowest cost of money that we could realize. In fact, I mean, that's the Glenda, that's, that's what you're going in Ralph's history with this. So that, that's what we're recommending is that we do the KLC bond issue is the best way to do this. It's a neatly packaged loan. It fits right in, uh, to do this and and seems like the best way to proceed.
Pass the, you motion to pass, pass the ordinance and then let me do the first thing.
Um, the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Kevin's second.
You guys go out to virtual arm wrestle over it. So, Kevin, you know, get your concede Kevin the second.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Uh, what kind of vote do we need on this? Resolution? Now, we're going to read it? Okay.
Uh, Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
You did say on the resolution you wanted to, this is what I thought. Uh, Councilman Harrington.
Yes.
Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Okay, so the resolution passes.
Okay. So now that we've gotten the resolution that allows KLC to act as our bond issuer, we're ready for a first reading of an ordinance.
Stephen, you know of any reason that that if we can't read the summary?
That is, uh, the summary is prepared by an attorney. So if you feel comfortable with reading the summary, that would, uh, be sufficient for its statute par.
There's no, no portion of the, of the actual ordinance that imposes fees or fines and so forth, right?
Correct.
Do we need to, do we need to introduce the ordinance or?
Yeah.
Need a, a motion and a second to?
Well, well.
Well.
Read it first, okay.
Okay, an ordinance approving the lease for the financing of a project providing for payment and security of the lease, creating sinking fund and authorizing institution based documents relating to such lease. Is hereby certified that the foregoing ordinance provides for approval of a lease with contained bond corporation for financing certain public improvements and provides general obligation pledges uh, to assess sufficient taxes to comply with the obligations paid lease payments. Full text of the section relating to the pledge levy and assessment for tax to pay lease obligation is section two, general obligation pledge, pursuant to the constitution of commonwealth in chapter sixty six of the biggerized statutes as amended, general obligation statutes. The obligation of the lease created by, uh, a blessing created by the lease shall be the full general obligation of the blessing uh, for the prompt payment of the lease payments, full faith and credit and revenue of the blessing are hereby pledged during the period of the lease, during the period the lease is outstanding, there shall be and there hereby is levied on all of the taxable property and the lessie, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the lease payments on the lease when and as due. It being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations, said tax shall be and hereby is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied and extended upon taxpayer and collected by the same officers in the same manner. At the same time, the taxes for general purposes for each said years are certified, extended and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof. Provided however, that in each year to the extent that other taxes of the lessie are available for payment of the lease payments are to, uh, and are appropriated for such purpose. Uh, the amount of such direct tax upon the taxable property of lessie shall be reduced by the amount of such other taxes so available and appropriate. There's hereby established, or is acknowledged then that that there has here for been established with the lessie, a sinking fund, this, the sinking fund. The funds derived from said tax levy hereby required or other viable taxes are replaced in the sinking fund and together with interest correct, collected on the same, are irrevocably pledged for the payment of all bonds or obligations issued under the general obligation statutes and all tax supported leases as defined in general obligation statutes, including the lease herein author, when and as the same fall due. Uh, amounts should be transferred from the same fund of the less or at all times and then the amounts required by the lease. A complete copy of the ordinance may be reviewed at the offices of the city. That's the summary of the ordinance.
Take a motion to introduce.
I'll make a motion to introduce.
Second. You got beat.
Chris second.
Chris beat you.
You just didn't hear him. Okay. Councilman Hale. Yes. Councilman Rao.
Yes.
Councilman Harrington.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Babcock.
Yes.
Councilman Howard.
Yes.
Okay, so pass the first reading.
So, so we'll be a, be a second reading.
We'll be next. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you all.
Okay.
The only agenda, consideration of approvals or written determination regarding surplus property. Turns out that there is a nineteen ninety four F eight hundred that Brian wants to get rid of. Right? So we've got a written determination here to take that F eight hundred and do what with it? So this resolution says we're going to put it on GovDills, right? Or similar. Okay.
Will it sell? Okay, just curious. All right. I'll make a motion to the three. Are we ready for that?
So maybe.
You have to read it?
Well, there's, I think I see something here that, uh, I'm going to ask John a question of, um, D, the city council is determined to accept bids on GovDills or similar service fund. But I've described dump truck and accordingly, the city administrators directed to advertise playground structure for bids reserved in the city. I think that belongs in the deleted category, right?
That does, that should be dump truck there instead of playground structure. Yes, I was just fixing to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Chris.
Well, I mean, the dump truck could haul the old playground structure, but it's already gone, right?
It did haul it, yes.
Okay, that playground huh, structures haunting you, John. John will correct before I get the mayor to sign that.
Okay, so back to it. Who wants to?
Mayor. All right, I make a motion.
Okay, she makes a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Second, on favor? Opposed? No opposition. So get that F eight hundred on GovDills dot com. Is this still got the, the badges on it saying F eight hundred? Those are pretty popular that to walk off, aren't they? I've seen golf carts thrown around with F eight hundred stickers on them. Okay. Other business. Before we leave, new business. I need to appoint John Ward, the applicant agent of FEMA's disaster declaration, which is DR four six three zero, which is the tornado outbreak. So, uh, what's going on here is we will be doing some, some work with FEMA and claiming some stuff. John, you want to fill in here?
I can. Um, in the past, uh, when we did the, the ice storm and the floods, uh, we've had to have applicant agent to deal with all of the paperwork that goes through FEMA. And in the past, you all have appointed me. And in the past, you all have appointed me in on, on each of the, the previous disasters. Um, and basically I'm just the point of contact for them to get documents moving and, and doesn't slow it down. I have to pull a gene in every two or three days to sign another document. Basically, it's just to move forward. Now, we, the difference is. We are not, we didn't have any damage, but we provided assistance to both Mayfield, uh, electric and water services and the county. Uh, and so what we have to do is we've got our documentation, we send that documentation and an invoice to. Mar- Marshall County and Mayfield, they will reimburse us and in turn they will be reimbursed by FEMA. So we can't actually claim directly. So our, our option is we go through the invoice process. They also will get to claim, Marshall County will get to claim, uh, our volunteers. That amount is not reimbursable monetarily, but they will receive. They can use that as a match for theirs, their part, portion of it. So, um, but. I just knew we need to get the applicant agent assigned, uh, for this, this, uh, disaster relief forty six thirty so that we can, uh. Can move forward on the paperwork.
Okay, I take a motion.
Ralph, she's emotional.
About a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Always opposed. Although Jeremy still has a thumb up. Jeremy's not opposed. There'd be a thumb down for the opposed, right? Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Um, marketing director's report.
You got one more thing?
I just have, sorry Blair. Uh, you know, every year we get, we have the municipal road aid discussion. And last year we decided that we would start getting it month in monthly checks and having, instead of having that been in that three percent emergency fund. That they have the. Um, let's see, the program provides eligible opportunity to receive emergency funding assistance. And we decided that we've never used it in all these years. So instead of having that three percent taken out, we would just start getting all the money. So the checks have been coming, or I mean, we just get automatic deposits every month. I'd say we're on track. We get about forty five hundred a month, so we're probably on track to get about fifty four thousand. I think it, I think I figured fifty, something like that. Um. And it was showing that we would get probably about forty six. So I think it's good to go ahead and if, uh, but it's up to you guys. If y'all want to go ahead and do the monthly thing. I don't have to do anything but send them an email that says we're gonna continue. You know, if we go with the other, we have to pass the resolution and which we've done all these years, except for last year, we decided not to do that.
You say we've never used it?
We hadn't ever had to, we hadn't ever had to ask for that.
Okay, so, so to, to refresh.
You go right ahead.
This, this is, this is the new guy on the block's fault. So she, you know, as, as I came on board about a year ago, and I was asking questions, what is this for? So they deduct three percent. To go into the emergency fund and you can make a request of it. Well, we've never made a request of it. So if we wanted to go back to the old way, then we would have to do this.
Right, we will have to pass a resolution.
To withhold three percent from our payment to participate in the emergency road aid fund. And right now, we're not participating in the emergency road fund.
When you do that, they send it to you in like three, three times a, a year. I think we get three different deposits. So this way we're getting, we're just getting it. In our account every month. We got, I got it today. So. But I just needed to ask you guys if you wanted to continue doing the monthly or what you want to do.
It looks like it's clear as mud.
I guess, um. If we wait and get it, if we don't get it monthly, we lose three percent of it. Is that what you're saying? If we get it the other way?
Yes.
Or if we have to request it?
No, we, we lose it. We don't get it.
So in a, in a case of an emergency, then you would, you would say that Calver City has this emergency and we need to dip into the emergency road aid fund. To which we've been funding out of three percent of our proceeds. And so when you look in all the years of doing this, and I don't know how many years it would be that we've been doing it, we've, we've more than thirty, we've never once made a claim. Okay, to go and say, hey, we're, we're gonna do this emergency, right? And when, when I asked the question and Glenda was, was asking the question of the people. Who are doing that and we, we really didn't get a good idea of, uh, what sorts of claims were actually looked at positively that, that our community would experience. That would be excluded from anything else. So.
And when I started asking them, I found out that the majority of cities do it monthly.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I was just like.
And I was like, we've never done that. So we started doing it last year and it has worked great.
It's, it's a token thing, but.
But it, it's your call, not mine.
I said, we'll continue.
Monthly.
Just continue. Okay, I will send, all I have to do is send them an email and say we want to continue. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Did I want? Yes, and everyone's, I do need everyone's financial disclosure. Actually, yes, by tomorrow. Thank you.
I will get mine when I get back to work, Glenda.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully tomorrow.
I have Chris's, I have Nate's. I have John's and mine. And Ralph said he sent his, but I'm gonna find the email.
If I, if I get it tomorrow, I'll scan it back to you, Glenda.
Okay, Jeremy sent, Jeremy, you haven't sent it again, have you?
No, I, I owe you a notarized copy. I sent you a notarized copy. Is there a notary at City Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
John, John and Crystal and, uh, uh, but I'm not, I'm not gonna do them since I'm a part of this. I'd rather not notarize.
Sounds good. I'll see you at three fifteen.
Thank you.
You got another thing on your pile?
No, this is just the much of that, Arpa info, but we're, we've already kind of covered that. And I just thought if we had a lot of questions, I brought all of.
Okay.
All of this fun stuff.
All this fun stuff. Okay. Well, now Blair, I think we're ready for you now. Yes.
Sorry, Blair.
Well, first, I hope, I hope to have that activity guy, um, working on like I did last year, having a year long. Pamlet of events that we have going on, uh, but you know, annual events. Well. I have a meeting with Kentucky Ann Village this week, so I gotta sit down with them and get their dates and then I should have it ready to go next week. Or this week, who knows? Um, the Tennessee Riverline. I talked to the Parks Board about this. They are gonna be here June, uh, June ninth through the twelfth. They're gonna visit Calvert City. And during their visit, they will do a sit down with leadership. And they will have a community wide event where people can come and, um, you know, give feedback to them. And then they'll also do a stewardship event. So picking up trash, cleaning up some shore lines, um, while they're here. And what will result out of them coming, um, they will put all of that together into a document for us. And help us to develop a conceptual plan, uh, for Cowards. We're thinking with Jean and I's conversation, uh, Mayor's is, um, you know, the Haddix Ferry, looking at that and ways that we can improve it and getting community feedback from it. And then, um, the Tennessee Riverline. Basically funding a conceptual drawing for us, um, that, you know, would save us about ten thousand dollars at least, I would say. Uh, so them coming here, uh, save that time, uh, the ninth. Half, um, I'd love you guys to be a part of that conversation, of course, and I'd love for them to meet you guys, uh, Glene Shapier Coward. It is, it's awesome. That's, this is the stage two. So stage one was that we host the paddling event, that we host a stewardship event, that we hosted, uh, who said terrorists?
No, not terrorists. We're not gonna do the terrorists.
Not terrorism, heritage, that's the word. I don't know where that came from. A headache right now. Uh, heritage event, which we did last year. Uh, so we checked all those boxes off. Now we're on the stage two. Um, I've, we worked with Paducah River, or Paducah, because they're a river town and we share their fleet. They have a twelve fleet kayak. Well, a fleet of twelve kayaks that we share. So I got with them and we got some dates scheduled. Um, we're gonna do a kayaking event in August and then in September, we're gonna do something at the country club. It's for kids. That may not have an opportunity to get out of the water, um, work with the elementary school and then work with the country club. And they will have, um, kayaks at the country club pool. So the kids can get in the kayaks. In a safe, controlled environment, they can experience what it's like in it being in a kayak. And that would be in September and then October would be a paddle event, uh, early, but second week in October. So, um, they kind of get that experience and then we'll take them into open waters, uh, in October if they want to participate in that. And anybody can participate in it, but, uh, so that's the Tennessee Riverline portion, uh, where we're at there. Um. So I'm on my list here. I talked with John and, um, you know, with the, you know, newly remodeled civic center, it's being used a lot more than when it was before. And there's things has changed, uh, as far as renting it and also, you know, the doors have changed and how to lock it and unlock it. And, you know, it's confusing me too. But people are propping the doors open because they don't quite understand how to use the key to, to dog it off. Um, so this morning we were talking about it. So I called Nathan over at Studio two seven oh, and we're gonna work on this next week. And doing kind of a how to rent the civic center video. I mean, just basic, like basically you walk in City Hall or you go online and this is how you download it. This is how you clean it. This is the, you know, this is where you take the trash. This is how you unlock the door. This is how you lock the door. Basics for people that have never rented it before. Um, so we're gonna work on that next week. Uh, along with that, we're working on the interactive zoning map. Uh, so it makes it a little bit clearer than this map here where you can actually zoom in and, and, and see. Uh, you know, where you're at and what street you're on and what zone that's in. And. I'm not, I'm gonna, uh, a part of the Tennessee, or Tennessee, not Tennessee Riverline. Becoming a Kentucky trail town. I haven't talked about that in a long time because. We're waiting on that last little section of trail to be finished, uh, before we can actually be part of it. But. One part of that trail town is encouraging our businesses to sell and promote Kentucky proud products. Um, so exciting to announce, they announced it today, is that Food Giant is carrying, um, off West Kentucky aquaponics lettuce. Uh, which is, you know, it's in Giraffinville. They're selling it here in Calvert and then Calvert Cafe is actually selling their lettuce too. So I think that's a wonderful, wonderful partnership and I'm super excited about that. Uh. Our trail counts, I have to start doing a trail count, uh, once a month. So just sitting in one spot and counting how many people use the trail, estimating their age, um, and how they're using it. Uh, if they're walking, biking. Riding a golf cart, I guess we can do that too. Uh, but it's a good, it's good for us to start kind of tracking that so that when the trail is finished. We kind of have a baseline for how many people are using it. Uh, so if anybody wants to help with that, they're more than welcome. Just email them, let me know. It'll be from a six AM to six PM timeframe. Um, for using it, so, um. All the help I can get. Uh, the yard of the season, it starts, it'll start in, uh, May. So get the word out, um, that get your yards pretty for, you know, spring, that first weekend in May will, um. Do the rounds and I haven't talked to Bruce yet, but I'm hoping that maybe he'll help me, uh, choose, uh, choose a house, uh, for, for the yard of season. Do you already get that advertised on Facebook? I don't, no, no, hopefully next tomorrow. Maybe, uh, but yeah, so get, to get that word out, uh, for yard of the season. And I think that's all I've got on my list.
A squad list. Go back to Kentucky Trail Town. So. As far as us being, we're trying to get designated as Kentucky Trail Town.
Right.
So how many more of these to do autumn have you got and what can we do to help?
Really, I mean, with the Kentucky Proud, that's, that's a big thing is, you know, getting products sold and Food Giant always, you know, already does a pretty good job of, you know, selling, you know, local things. I sell local honey and, um, you know, the lettuce and there's several couple other, uh, hams that they, you know, meats that they sell that are local. Um, obviously finishing the connection is the biggest part, uh, because that's what makes you a trail town is having a connection from your city to a natural. Uh, resource, natural state, first state park, uh, having that finished and then trail, um. Tracking the trail usage, uh, is another part. So we're gonna, that's why I'm starting it this month. In hopes that we can start that baseline of who's using the trails and then we'll have. You know, roughly years worth of trail, uh, usage to document. Once we can, then we can apply for the trail town.
Okay, so you're pretty much on schedule, what you'd imagine then?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's really literally just waiting on the, the finish.
I wonder what, what is the status of that?
We'll get one off John before we get off here.
The street walkers might help you, you know, like they walk a couple hours. Glenda, they might, you know, they might be.
They can change off that you need double count.
I, I'm gonna try, I'd like to try and keep it like, um, you know, just on a regular basis. So just doing Thursdays. Each month and I might do Saturdays too. Depends on how many volunteers I get.
Just pick out which camera you're gonna monitor, I guess.
Blair, if I ever showed you my dad.
No.
I know, I mean, crazy, I know. But there was a man, a fox man. Always he made money because he made photos by hand.
In here, in here.
Here, out home.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the city now.
Right.
But he made them by hand and my dad bought a pair from him in the forties. After, it was sometime around forty seven, forty eight, forty nine. I still have one of them in my office.
So this is a full blown ore.
Yes, yes. And it's made out of, it's made out of, uh. Sypris.
Hmm.
So it's very light. So, um. I mean, we didn't have kayaks. We had John boats, man.
Yeah, yeah.
And believe it or not, the people here built John boats by hand. And that's how they got to Paducah. They would have oars and they'd have poles. Because they'd go to Paducah to buy their groceries on the river. And they'd get out in, in the middle of the river going down. So that's where the most, that's where the fastest currents. And then coming back, they would have poles with hooks on them or not hooks, you know, and just push the boat, stay close to the shore and just grab onto the trees and bang, pull yourself back. So, uh, but that's how they shot. They went to the foot of Broadway in a, in a wooden boat.
That's, that's pretty cool. And we'll have to get the Tennessee Riverline folks to. I mean, our boats are John boats, not kayaks. Okay, so, uh, let's go into airport update. John, you want to lead us into an airport update and then turn it over to Hanson?
We'll come.
Airport update, uh.
We'll come back.
I'm sorry.
We'll come back around to projects.
Okay, then I'll let Tim's ta- take the airport.
Damn.
You want me to do that now, John?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Um, the, the, the project that we're currently undertaking is the airport layout plan. And the environmental assessment for, the environmental assessment effort is for the fence and the final phase of clearing. Um, at the present time, our staff has completed. Uh, all the field work necessary that they can do. There is some cultural resource that we have had to postpone, but we expect to get that underway in the next month or so. Um. But that field work is done, documentation is being prepared. In the meantime, uh, Craig and Hanson staff have been working on some issues associated with. The task order or the agreement for contracting to do those two projects. Um. We noticed, uh, great, Craig and I this afternoon noticed one final paragraph that needed some tweaking and some adjustment. We anticipate that being ready for signature this week. We anticipate that being ready for signature this week. And as soon as we get that signed, we'll get our subs. Uh, the two subs that are the foundation of the AOP. One of them is uh, is GRW. And they will do the aerial photography necessary for the uh, for the approach studies that we have to do for the airport layout plan. And the other sub is the cultural resource archaeology that needs to be done to support the environmental. So we anticipate getting the airport layout plan uh, kicked off officially in March. And during the March meetings and uh, the environmental work will continue. Uh, that's my report.
Um, I'd like to add to that uh, as far as airport goes and I know it's part of the projects, but um, we now have one vacant hangar. All the others have been rented. And uh, Blair, did you actually touch, I couldn't hear you real well. Did you touch on the airport open house?
I did not.
Okay, Blair's got that set for April the eighth at two, from two to five PM. It's Friday, April the eighth. I'm going to make sure everybody can put it on their calendar and be there if possible.
Anything else on airport, John?
No, sir.
Okay. April, okay. Projects or you should go to the projects?
Yes, sir.
And we had, um, we had me bring on to the status of the connector along Lone Valley Road. Can we kick off with what we know about that one? They kick off with a back hot multi-use trail along Lone Valley Road between the two.
Uh, right now there, the state is in the process of doing the, Greg, you may be able to elaborate more than I can, but I think the state's in the process of making the, the um, are working on purchasing the land that we're going to have to have for the project.
That's correct. They've got the, they've got the property owners all identified. We've got title opinions on all of the, on all of the properties and their folks are supposed to be making the acquisitions.
How many property owners do you know? Just curious.
More than you think. Probably eight different uh, tracks.
Yeah, I could see that, yeah.
So as far as timing on that, we don't really have a good idea.
I've not heard from them since they got all of our information probably in September.
I haven't heard anything else other than that either.
So September for completion of acquisitions or acquiring land, you think maybe September? We just don't know the timeframe.
I just don't.
State Center thing, we're seeing it moving and for several months we didn't see it. Now it's moving.
Well, I guess it's in their hands. They, they tell me it's moving.
Let's just curious on the, going back to the open house at the airport, are you going to invite the governor?
Absolutely invite everybody.
Okay, good.
Everybody wants to come and try to get them to come. I mean, our, you know, the governor, the local uh, state folks, everybody who wants to come, especially interested in the federal delegation. That's where the procreation's come from. So we'll see what we can get and the, the weekend was.
April the eighth.
Selected, kind of be friendly to, to many schedules.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big thing, I think it's uh. Yeah.
I don't know about being, I hope if I can.
Okay, are you going to do some more project update, John?
Yes, um, I'd like to uh, acknowledge and, and uh, the money makers. Um, they have been instrumental in developing our mountain bike trail through the twenty-five acres of wooded area behind the school. For uh, I think they've, they've have helped lay out and um, actually helped clear as volunteers the four point one miles of, of a trail. We've still got other things to do and our folks have got to go in there and assist it on a couple of things. But uh, we should probably have the uh, the mountain bike trail or course there through that area uh, ready by probably mid-spring anyway. Um, and if, and it, you know, hats off to the money makers because they've done a great job in, in, in pushing it forward and, and getting out there and getting their hands dirty and getting it clean, getting the trails laid out and set up for us. So we appreciate their work. Um, they are to the mountain bike trail what the ladders are to the park pickleball courts.
John, I appreciate you giving them a shout out like that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, we appreciate the, the people of Calvert because, you know, I've found that they really step up. They get passionate about things and they step up and we appreciate that. Um, we are in the process of revamping applications and forms. We're working with Blair, trying to make these a little more, make them more clear, make them easier and the directions uh, easier to follow. Um, and may even be able to, to work towards ranking them digital eventually, but I don't know. We'll just have to, we'll see, but we're in the process of revamping them so that they are up to date with the new ordinances, especially with zoning and then other items uh, throughout the city as far as excavation forms, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, none of these forms will go into, into service until after Greg's had a chance to review them to make sure that we've met everything we need to legally. Um, but I think that uh, the new formats are going to be something that uh, uh, it'll make it easier for the people uh, that are filling them out. So um, and Bruce and, and Blair have been working with us, uh, trying to get that together. The new dump truck is in for uh, Public Works, Street Department. It's really nice, folks, when you can actually say that you have a company here in your home city that has a master agreement with the state of Kentucky for equipment. And Tag Truck here in Calvert City actually has a master agreement for large trucks, chassis trucks uh, for the state of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Uh, we were able to go through them to get our newest dump truck uh, at a, 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 a real reasonable cost. And um, right now Brad's trying to outfit it with snow plows for future endeavors between now and the end of the, or now in spring. And see, uh, and, and speaking of that, uh, there was a question about ice on sidewalks. Ice on sidewalks is something we don't generally um, work on removing um, because we're trying to get the roads together. Uh, we will work around uh, facilities, uh, but we don't have the equipment. And you know, you start trying to plow ice on a sidewalk with a tractor, you're going to destroy sidewalks. Um, and with snow, of course, you have some traction, it just makes it a little more difficult. Um, I, I'm not trying to put this off, but I would recommend if you're going to try to walk on sidewalks and ice, you might want to invest in some of those ice creepers because there's not hardly anything we can do, especially in extreme cold to uh, fix that issue, I'm afraid. Um, and the last thing on my, that I have on mine is the um, um, playground status, uh, talk with the uh, representative with Miracle Today. We still have one unit that's designed, is supposed to come in next week. Uh, another unit has been pushed back until March the seventh, but um, like I said, I am still hopeful.
So the ones coming in next week, we're going to go ahead and bring it in, right?
Oh yeah, I'm going to have them send it on in. I told them, I said, don't try to send them together, just send it in. They're going to send it here. We'll maintain, we'll store them until um, they can get us on, we can get down, they can get down here to install them. Uh, and then they'll install it all at one time. Um, that way we've got, got it set up. And it will, they will have them both in before they can get down here to install. Um, they're getting backed up on that too, but I'm written, I want us on the list as quickly as possible. So I've been talking with them on a weekly basis, so.
So a structure in hand is worth two in the chain?
That's my thought at this point.
All right. I looked up something here. Are you, are you done with projects, John? Do you got anything else?
Yes, sir, that's it. Unless someone has any questions, I can answer.
They got specific questions? Okay. Uh, I was going to take a look at the uh, the, the revenue generated by the civic center versus budget. What was that number? So the rental income year-to-date from the civic center was twelve thousand two hundred and the total budget of income was five thousand. So that's hence we need the how to rent the civic center video, right? So that, that's somewhat of the demand there. Okay.
A lot of nice compliments about it all over here. Good job.
Yep, and you know, there, there, there's been some issues with it. Um, most of the issues have just been growing pain issues. Trying to deal with, with demand and, and different items and the fact that we changed what we were doing and it's a lot nice facility, we want to take care of it.
Mayor?
Yes.
You might also make note, the airport itself in revenues has brought in fifty-seven, five eighty and its expenditures year-to-date are um, we'll get to that, fifty-five, nine twenty-nine. So it's actually brought in more money than we've spent on the airport.
That's right. You told me that earlier, was a few weeks ago. You said we, we reached the break even point on the airport in this fiscal year. And that's, that's an important point. How did the, how did the fuel cell go out there?
Um, I mean, we, we actually are, uh, we're in good shape.
Okay, so you're able to, to get some moved out?
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right. Well, now um, that expands the agenda that we have down here. And I normally go around and ask council member what's going on. Now we have visitors to the council and we'll be presumptuous to know what you'd like to talk about, Josh, fire department? Okay. So um, before we go to this, I think the fire department's going to be an executive session because we're going to talk about personnel matters. Okay? And we, we can go do that. So before we adjourn to personnel matters, executive session, we're going to go ahead and, and get through, get through our normal um, cadence.
I don't.
Nita doesn't have anything. She's been, she's been working hard on this other thing and, and, and I, kudos to, to Nita on, on getting us involved and getting us doing something on, on the, the need for emergency shelter. So Jeremy's with us on, on line.
I thought Tenara forgot to mention that she got her grant at the last meeting.
Well, I think we did mention it.
Did we or did I miss it?
Yeah.
I don't think you mentioned it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, I read it in the paper.
Well, I heard it in chambers. I think we talked about, maybe we didn't talk about it in meeting proper, maybe it's before.
Me before I knew.
Oh, well, who might have done that? Who might have done that? I'm, I'm sorry. So there's an official grant award?
Yes, and I, I don't have the money yet, but boy, I've got it spent.
Okay, you want to say something about that before we go around the table or?
I.
What is this grant for, Tenara?
This is um, now that y'all put me on the spot, I don't have all my notes ready and all this is going to be back. It's for bike safety and you know, since we have our trails here, I think that it's very important to the school. Um, Blair's actually the one who said, hey, you guys would be interested in this, you should go for it.
So is identified a grant opportunity, was identified?
Yes, and it's going to paint the crosswalks, make it maybe a little more colorful for the kids, but we also have maps made. Um, we're going to create a bike club for our older kids so that I'll spend a week with them in the summer. And we're going to ride around from their houses and show them how to get to school safely. We're going to get some bike racks out there, we're going to get some helmets, safety gear, crosswalk, um, uniform vest, stop signs, slow signs, um.
So March County School System was awarded the bike safety grant and what was the grant award total?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars and it was from?
The Polidale. Okay, good, it's just Pauline.
Okay.
And I think in previous years, uh, it's gone to a school in Louisville. So this year we got it.
All right.
I'm pretty excited about that.
Good deal.
It, it, they do multiple grants, um, but actually you guys received it in elementary school or it's the library. They received three thousand dollars.
Oh, perfect. So if y'all know anyone interested, somebody retired that wants to work a crosswalk, send them my way.
Okay.
Somebody that.
So there's, there's more to come. So there's more to come and how this is all going to come. Okay, all right, we'll look forward to that. So Nita, uh, Jeremy, you got anything you want to bring up or mention before we um, go to an executive session here?
No, sir.
Wow, that's a pretty big like.
But I need to say what I had to say.
Oh, I'll come back.
Okay.
She put you on the spot for the public relations thing, so I'll come back around and, and we lost Kev. Kevin had to go do some, Chris? All right, so back to Tenara, Tenara.
You guys might find this to be silly, but we're in need. I, I do yoga with the city on Saturday mornings and Tuesday evenings. So the issues in Saturday morning when we are in the civic center, the sun is so bright when it's coming up that we actually cannot see Leanne, even if we try to put her at the other end of the building because that light goes all the way through. There is a um, there's something hanging up there like a, a screen, a projector screen. And if it were to be moved over just a little bit, then pulled down, it would take care of it. Or if we could put something, a blind or something up there. I don't know that that would look good though. I think the best option would be to move that screen so we can just pull that screen down Saturday morning zone.
I've had other people ask about that too, uh, meetings, that they have meetings in there and that it's, the sun is a little bit.
Okay, so it's not just us?
It, well, when they're using projector and then they pull it down, uh, so the sun's right in the back, it's kind of.
They make screens that are not, that, that will blend in.
Okay, so we have an, we have an identified need and uh, Brad has the uh, secret weapon for contracting type issues at his disposal. And so Brad, you think you can work on something? Maybe Blair, Blair can answer any questions you might have. But I, I don't know. I'm sure, I'm sure this people can help us select something appropriate. So the screen needs a, a sunblock behind this, so the screen works better too, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I can think of another structure that has similar issues, Methodist Church, uh.
We put some.
Yeah, yeah. And I think there was a screen on the outside, outside of that thing. So.
And that helps a great deal. I can bring you some gingham curtains, you know.
Gingham curtains? There you go. Add that conversation, touch to. Okay, well, with that said, um, the Scots are here and as mayor, I'm aware of some uh, some issues that they have and would like to talk to council about and it's uh, it's personnel matter and fire department. And personnel matters in the fire department has to do with the fire chief and, and the mayor. But I value your volunteers tremendously and I want to, I want to give them an opportunity to talk to us. So I would like to go to an executive session since it is a personnel matter and do that. So this will, I expect that uh, this will conclude. The, there's not an issue to be decided in the executive session. This would uh, by, under what statute can we go to the executive session, Greg?
Well, here's the announcement that, that I'll make for us. The general nature of the business to be discussed closed session is um, facts and circumstances surrounding the potential um, appointment or dismissal of a member. The reason for the closed session is protect the privacy interests of persons involved and the specific provisions carry us sixty-one, eight-ten authorizing uh, the closed session or uh, sixty-one, eight-ten subsection one, sub paragraph F. So having made that announcement.
I can't make that motion on administrative branch, you guys.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so that said, we're going to go into the executive session, we're going to discuss some fire department issues. So uh, I'll let, I'll let Silas out of here without uh, without really making any big reports or putting him on the spot. Okay.
Bye, boy.
I'm not going alone to my paddle.
Okay.
I don't blame you.
I wouldn't either.
You got a chain to the wall?
I've seen.